Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular board visitation meeting of October 19th, 2021. We'll have the political agents in a moment of silence. The moment of silence this evening is for Rosemary Shaw, who was a classroom aide, Edith Bellhaber, who was a secretary at Starr, and Mr. Bert White, who was the assistant principal at Clay High School. Stand for the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of all, with due justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please, Mr. Stewart?
And Mr. Shea?
Brode.
Mr. Magditch?
President.
Mr. Mulmer?
Here.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mr. Zviski?
Yeah.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during this meeting, so we're not disturbed. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
So good. Sorry.
Discussion?
Yeah, quick question. I'd like to see item new business number B, naming of the art studio and part table. Just until there's a proper board discussion on that. In the past, when we've done this stuff, before it's gotten together, discussed publicly in public meeting, what we want to have naming up to, what the dollar amounts were, will be attached to those, and then we, you know, kind of publicized it, communicated like we did for the trust box. I'd like to wait and see that, and we go, we go through that process like we normally do, because today I don't think there's any, any open board discussion on this. I'll say, I guess if it's the proper thing to do now, it'll still be the proper thing to do in a month.
Board can choose to hold it or not hold it.
Do you, is that a motion, Mr. Zviski? A motion to remove it? Do you have a motion to remove it?
What I heard is that it came up on the presentation.
Okay, that discussion, so you want a motion to remove that? Okay, we have a motion, may I have a second? Hearing no second? No second? It will then remain? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
No.
And Mulmer?
Yes. Okay, moving on to public participation at board meetings. All meetings of the board are open to the public. In order for the board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation may be permitted at each meeting. Each person addressing the board shall give his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted with three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. During this period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Persons desiring more time should follow the procedure of the board and be placed on a regular agenda. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. I do have two cards this evening. The first one is Mr. Gary Ackerman. Mr. Ackerman, the microphone over here, please.
Thank you. I believe this turn on.
It is?
Hi, I'm Gary Ackerman, 8560 Ronald Road. And so I just wanted to come in personally and encourage you to read and take a look at the articles and emails that I believe I sent each, each one of you in regard to the masks. And if, if these studies, even from the government, if these studies are true, I'm not sure that we're doing justice to the kids. After you look at these, I think I sent it Thursday or Wednesday, but take a little time to look at it, and I think that if we come up, we've been 19 months into this, and I think there's enough evidence and information out there to make informed decisions. And sometimes I think if we have a love for the truth, we'll pursue it, and I think that is, I'm asking all of us to, to have that disposition. Informed decisions. I mean, if we're going to buy a house, we're going to get an appraiser and inspector. Otherwise, we're a little stupid if we don't do that. We're going to buy into something, and we may, we may not like what we're buying into. So I, I do have a question. I know there's some incentives, some other school boards, but I do have one question. I'm going to read it so that I don't get it wrong. I have a yes or a question, and it would be this. Are there any federal or state funds promised or already received into Oregon schools contingent on cooperation with CDC or Health Department recommendations of COVID guidelines?
No.
Okay. In 2018, we had a Chitty Chitty Bang Bang. Our whole family got to participate in it, and I got to play the toy maker. And it was an interesting character who was hiding kids down in the castle. And at the end of the show, he got to do something. He ripped up the king's edict. I don't know if you remember that. And the king's edict, this always stuck in my mind, but I'm thinking about this. I, I see the kids masked, and they're like vacuum cleaners, they're like our filters. They rarely get this, and I, I don't know if we're doing any good. We need to look into, keep looking into it. But he ripped up this edict, and the edict said, "The Suppression of Children Act." That was the edict. And his line was, "The Suppression of Children Act is now repealed." And I just want you to think about, we all want what's best for the kids. I know, I know, I know, I know you do. But let's think about what we're doing with this over their face. There's a study I gave you guys. Parents sent this dirty diaper to the lab, and there's all kinds of bacteria and stuff inside these masks. Our bodies are meant to excrete and eliminate waste. Part of that is through our lungs. So thanks for the time. I appreciate you looking into some information I sent you. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And Mr. Eric Dennis, please.
Hello. Good evening to everyone. I'm here, you know, because again, I'm not agreeing with the masks. I know anything I say, you guys made your decision, I understand that.
May I hear it, Jeff?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Eric Dennis, 353 South Decant Road, Curtis Isle, 43412. I guess what I want to know is, is what are we doing to, to make things better for the kids at the school? Like improving their indoor air quality for the kids and the staff, not just the kids. I mean, this is the staff, too. Not all the staff want to wear a mask either. We know that we can implement different things, like changing filters more frequently, changing the kind of filters that we are using. There's different kinds of air purification systems that are out there that we can implement in our schools. Just kind of wondering if we have taken any steps to look into any of this, or if we're just going to mask up the kids and that's just, just it. I want to know, are we meeting the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, Air Conditioning Engineers and the CDC guidelines for the improvement of our air quality inside for the kids? I guess all I want to say is, let's just try to get something different going on here. I mean, I understand people want to mask up. It's a choice. Let's give people a choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. That's all my piece of cards. Do you have anything else, Mr. Shea?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, staff and community recognition.
I'm up. All right. So want to welcome Vivian Stuhler. Vivian, I'm going to have her come up here, and I'm going to meet you up here at the microphone. Vivian received the Northwest Ohio, Ohio School Boards Association Excellence in Community Service Award. And, and if you don't know Vivian, I'd be surprised. And, you know, we're honored here tonight. We, we were fortunate to be able to go to dinner with her and her family a couple weeks ago. Mr. Savick, Mr. Shea, and I, Mrs. Mulmer went down to Willard, and the family was there, and we had a nice dinner and got to hear some of their bands and stuff. And what happens each year, for those of you who don't know, is there's regions around the state that, that celebrate their folks, that folks that are in their district that, that volunteer, that do something extraordinary, those types of things. I've been in the district 19 years, and one of the people that I continually would see wherever I went was Vivian as a parent, supporting the local school, supporting the event that was going on, volunteering her time on the weekend, or a Friday night, or you pick a night. Vivian is just everywhere. And, you know, I kind of got to know her when she was a parent at Jerusalem, where she now works for us. We couldn't be more happy in the cafeteria. Not only does she work part-time in the cafeteria, but she subs for us, like she's been doing the last several days, and, and helping us cover when we can't. Vivian is very special. Vivian is one of those individuals that will support her school even if her kids aren't in the school. She's got older kids here today in the junior high and high school, but she still helps out the elementaries whenever she can. So on behalf of the Board of Education, myself, the whole administration, congratulations. We want to honor you here tonight, and thank you for all your service that you do.
Thank you. I have my senior, Andrew Stuhler, and my eighth grader, Brock Stuhler, and they have often been in schools that they are no longer at, helping with various things in, being voluntold to do whatever. They also help with Mr. Sneed or Mr. Kuzol and different band things, or other lighter things. But I also want to thank the board members that actually see me out doing all this stuff. I wouldn't receive this word if they weren't there also seeing me. It's not, I'm never alone. I always have my backup people, whether it's limelighters or band that help also. OCT, anything I do, I have other volunteers helping me. So it's kind of a team effort, no matter what I do, it's a team effort. So thank you. I appreciate it.
And thank you for being so positive, and, and, you know, through all of this, you've been there. Thank you a lot.
You are welcome, and you'll continue to see me.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Vivian. So, let me just jump. So later on in the agenda, as you know, if you've seen the agenda, we're, we're going to be voting on the bids for our performing arts studio, which we're very excited about. And so I just wanted to invite the person that's kind of led us through this project, Mike Rowe, group, group, to be here tonight. I also invited Tom Sneed, who is the instructor, who's going to be benefiting probably the most from, from an instructional standpoint of, of this new facility, and he might even say a couple of words on kind of maybe the hope and how it will be used with kids. But, but Mike, if you would kind of, kind of come up and, and maybe give the board just a brief overview of, of where we're at and maybe where we're going, and maybe some of the challenges approved tonight that, that might be ahead of us.
Sure. So we took bids in the end of last month, and where we stand now is, if anything goes well tonight, we'll get a letter of intent out to the parent a little better, and the next steps would be to engage with them and get the contract going, so we get them on board. Biggest thing to do right now is getting shop drawings and lead times figured out, as everybody knows, construction materials are not. They're all over the board right now, so trying to get them on board and engage as soon as we can is definitely important. There are some building material components that are part of this project that are long lead time, so we just want to make sure sooner the better. Get them on board, start construction. A lot of the renovation work will be conducted, the new construction aspect of the project will start that in the spring, and then be through the, the summer months, and then be ready for next school year. So that's, uh, it's kind of the, the short, simplified version, but some of the tasks we got to get through again is just, the biggest thing right now is material lead times. I mean, there's just, every day we're hearing from vendors and suppliers that certain materials are going to be six months out, 12 months out. It's crazy to look at some of those lead times and how they affect the construction industry, so.
So what's, what you're seeing now is a rendering that was, was developed. Could you talk a little bit about maybe the condition the building's in now and, and why we believe we could get it to this point? You know what I mean? Because it wasn't a disaster falling down. We had lots of those discussions.
Not by any means. I mean, structurally, it's a sound building. Obviously, there's cosmetic repairs. We've got a little bit of tuck pointing of the brick, the existing brick facade is there now, but structurally, it's sound. We're just going to clad over the top of that brick material, fix what we can, make the, a couple little tuck pointing brick masonry restoration items clad over the top, and then work our way in the inside, and then remove some of the structure that's in there, just to open up bigger performing arts areas for Tom's studio space and so forth. But all in all, I mean, the building itself, it's, it's not going anywhere. It's been standing there for plenty of time. We've gone through it a number of times with our structural engineer, and it's just a matter of bringing it back to life and taking it out of, I mean, it's prime real estate right here in the front of the building.
And one of the things that we had talked about, which we're, we're excited about, is this green lawn and, and kind of extension a little bit of the, of the building, an external extension that was kind of a last minute kind of idea that came about for not a lot of extra cost, because really the sidewalk, we had already kind of talked about going around the building, but, you know, could we extend it out a little bit and have a nice area that we could use however we chose to use it? Gathering place and, and maybe a place that, all right, watch, talking to me. So that's what the external looks like, and that's another side view. Can you talk a little bit, just in the back of the building, you can't see, but around this corner?
Yep.
We're building a kind of a storage structure thing.
Yeah, so one of the parts of the existing warehouse feature where it is now is there's a lot of set design, storage pieces that are in the one bay of the existing warehouse now, so we had to repurpose that, put a small addition on the backside of the building that would house basically that same function. So on the backside, there's a bus loop that does loop back around the building now. That'll still be maintained. It'll actually be better done, it'll be paved rather than a stone drive, so we'll just connect the paving around the building and get that back edition on to support all the, all the set structures.
And there's still be plenty of room for the buses that we, we know that go around that area, so we're excited about that. And then the interior. Just going to bring this over. So, yeah, these were from some time ago, these, these drawings here, so, but this is, it's been tweaked a little bit from this picture, but just to give the, the audience and the, the community a kind of a sense of the interior. I don't know if you wouldn't mind just maybe going through it real quick, just kind of, so. I know, I have my pointers, sorry.
The larger orange space in the middle section, that's the larger performing arts studio space, flex support space. The smaller orange to the, to the left of that serves as a multi, again, very flexible as buildings, it was designed to be as flexible as possible for all the different entities utilizing. So that space could have time to be served as a lobby if there's a larger gathering or other small breakout session room and so forth. On the far left-hand side where the green is, that's your back of house, so you've got dressing rooms, restroom. The blue space there is one office to support the teaching capacity component. The smaller green section right next to the blue, it's just a mechanical room. And then if you go all the way to the right side, that's the recording studio side, so that's shaken up a little bit from this floor plan, but essentially what that is, studio space for small, like a single user, and then you've got a larger space for a group of people and so forth. That's basically looking at the engineering side of things where, where all their boards are going to be about, so they can see through to the recording studio side on the other side of smaller and larger.
Kind of a two-room structure, one for the, the individuals who are recording, whatever they're recording, and then one for the controls, and then that's kind of just the open layer area.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of a flexible space where originally we kind of proposed it to be maybe some recognition halls and so forth, whatever, performing arts and memorabilia and so forth, donors. So that's a lot of just kind of placeholders for now, but that space is truly flexible. And if it's a small group out session, they can meet there.
And then these were just kind of that dance floor area, performance area that, that will be used by kids. And, and then just the interior look, I know, Mr. Sneed, we had some conversations about, you wanted, wanted it to, to feel industrial, to feel very arts, art-centric. I don't know what the right word is, but it's going to be kind of an open ceiling, right, where we get to see the lights and the...
The existing structure stays intact. We painted all out black, so it sort of goes away. We've got the linear lighting fixtures in there to try and give it that modern industrial, but we'll have some kusco spray closing up there for the ceiling, kusco wall treatment on the side of the walls. Again, the space is designed to be, to meet a multiple different entities for utilizing that space, whether it's dance one day or solo performance, require the next day just different features. Yeah. We'll quit giving the question here, but we're all, all LED. No, we got LED strip fixtures, so I mean, LEDs come along with it pretty much for the entire building, all of the LED.
So, so again, these were some of the old, the older versions without the outside, but very similar to what we, what we ended up with, so. So that's what I just wanted, Mike, to kind of share that in. If there's any questions, obviously, that any of the board members have.
At the same time, having you come back up later on, can you tell us about a little bit of?
Well, a speaker company, a proud speaker company, we've worked with them a lot. I mean, they're a big company, been around, oh, since 1880s, I think, so there are plenty of generations in there. I've worked on, personally, I've worked on jobs in the multimillion dollars all the way down to the hundreds of thousands, so they're kind of caliber contractors that work down over there.
Where they don't get to?
Uh, well, they actually just opened up in Northwood, that's where their, their shop is now.
And they indicated who they're outsourcing to?
I'm sorry, but?
They indicated who they're outsourcing to?
Uh, they're subcontractors? Yeah, yeah, we have, let's say they're subcontractors.
And you all about a county?
No, they're all local. I mean, they're pretty much all local.
Actually, Jeff, we can get that, just, I actually just saw that and peeked at that, but many of them are, are individual companies that we've worked with for a long time. I know one of them was Nor, Nor, uh, Norton Roofing. I recognize because they've done a lot of business for us. There was a couple others I can't think off the top of my head. I think Mechanicals might be Dimec, which is a local Oregon company. Any others, Dean, that we, that we've worked with on a regular basis? There was a couple others I thought, but?
Tiffin Scenic, we've worked with. Lakeside before.
Lakeside, that was one I recognized, that I've done work for.
I guess I'm more of a, with the located, I'd put it out of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know all of them.
Very, very local, obviously, Tiffin Scenic and Tiffin, but they're, they're the theater folks, and there's a few of those around.
Indeed, will we ever find out the average percentage of the change orders to the total cost?
Yes.
With the last four or five projects?
Yeah, it's been at five percent or below.
Okay. And the, and the holdback for that is 10%?
Yes, that, yeah, that's the right thing.
Good questions. Any else have anything, or? You know, we started this project, literally talking about it back in 18, but really kind of came around early 19. You know, when you look at these drawings, they're January of 19, looking back and had some, you know, big dreams back then, and, you know, obviously COVID hit and, and it stalled a lot, but I can't thank everybody enough for kind of picking up the ball and moving forward with it once we were able, and we will see how the vote goes. But unless there's no questions from Mike, that probably concludes this part of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item seven, the treasures report.
All right, you just have my report in your packet. I just wanted to run through the items that we're voting on, just make sure it was clear. The first one is the giving tree, approval of the new fund, Jerusalem principal, their school wants to establish a clause of items for struggling families, so we need a fund to allow donations and purchases of items from that fund. So that's 0079116, Jerusalem Giving Tree. There is an updated appropriation measure attached. The only item that was increased was the third ESER of 3.9 million. That is the increase. I did not put it in the appropriation measure until it was approved by the state so that we can move forward. So our total ESER funds are $6 million. There is one more ESER fund we need to get a budget around for, and it is to be used for $188,000, to be used for our special education services, and we'll have to figure out how we wish to send that and put that in the grant so we can get approval and begin appropriating it. So that's everything in there. The last item on the treasures approval section is the approval, and this was all put up in the Google docs, the AOS, meaning the Auditor of State Record Retention Schedule. They updated it in 2017. Just want to make sure that we have a board approval of it, that that is approved timeline of how we wish to save our records. This has to be then sent to the High Historical Society, and then I can get rid of some of the files that clean up what is at the warehouse a little bit more. So that's out of those items. Five-year forecast update, a little disappointed that, I guess I can't really say anything about the state, but they will not have our funding amounts until the summer now, so I'll make it more interesting for the five-year, do November 30th award on it. We'll finalize ESER 3 in the budget. We have not quite done that yet without it being approved. Some miscellaneous items, the FPRs for all the CCIP grants, they're all done. Finally, no wish of problems there. We do have SRS, STRS review. I haven't heard anything back. I sent them everything, so that's all done. Finalizing gap work papers, waiting to audit. That will be starting soon. To tag on to the discussion on the funding for performing arts, that you'll be voting on later, I wanted to review the funding. One of the goals of this project was even though everything's running through the PI funds, we're trying not to use voted money. So the final bid that has been presented is $1,454,400. We did use an 8% contingency, just because they've never been more than 5%. I could push it up to 10, but we used 8%. So the total cost of the project is listed there for $1.5 million potential cost. We have over $257,500 worth of donations. In the PI fund, we've had $288,820 worth of state of plan. On the Medicaid PI funds, we get, have been getting over the last five to six years, some one-time money. I've always recommended to get it transferred into the PI fund for a one-time project, and I believe we determined that this is a one-time project. That accounts for $928,000. And then of the project, in our ESER 3 grant, we can put some of the hardware, meaning HVAC system, because it does improve air quality. So that was $120,000. So available right now for the $1,570 is $1,594. No voted dollars are spent on this at this point. We have a bit of a funding cushion, either for the contingency or for some of the furniture, about $23,000. So I just wanted to run through funding before you actually do the vote. It's on the back of your report. So if there are questions, let me know. I just, that is my report, though, unless there are questions.
Mrs. Stewart, do you want the motion for records retention separate from the treasures report motion, or can it be together?
It can be together.
We'll put them together then. I need a motion to approve the records retention policy and to accept the treasures report as given.
Ooh.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulmer?
Yes. Moving on, executive session, we will have one at the end. Is there anyone who wants one at the beginning? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing non-emotion is needed to vote on the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Sold.
Discussion. Second.
Second.
Discussion. I do want people to know that the Catherine Mulnar that's in there is not related to me. I've had that question before when there's been a Mulnar. I don't even know the young lady. Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yeah.
Mr. Mangich.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulrath.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to new business. The performing arts studio, I need a motion to accept bids for the performing arts studio. It's recommended that we use the bid from Speaker in the amount of one million, four hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. May I have a motion, please?
Sold.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Mangich.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Mulrath.
Yes.
Item B, naming of the performing arts studio. I refuse myself. Mr. Shea, would you take over, please?
Yes, I'd like the authority on motion for naming of the performing arts studios. Your motion, please.
Sold.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Brute?
No, discussion.
Discussion, I'm sorry.
So I just want to reiterate my disappointment that we're not having actual board discussion on the naming right here. Like we, as I said, having people pull me aside at football games to discuss, in Tommy, it's a done deal. It's really a transparent board discussion to me. We we probably left people out in trying to get donations to name some things. I think, calculation, sixteen percent of the total project is donated funds and we pretty much gave the house away and all the inside. A lot definitely percentages we used when we did the. Trust box. Like I said, I just think we need more transparency and in some of this stuff as we move forward and make sure we're communicating up to the public and potential donors. We could have missed out on some, so that's all I'll say.
No further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mr. Mangich.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
No.
And Mrs. Mulrath? I abstained.
I'd like Trevor Flor back over to Mrs. Mulrath for the. Steve.
Item C is a resolution to oppose House Bill two ninety. It's called the Backtack Bill. It would establish a statewide universal voucher program. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, the House would just kind of talk of.
Yeah.
That's the gist of it, but many others may not.
Yeah, it's 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 a very simple, I guess, understanding is, you know, there's vouchers for kids to go from certain low-performing schools around the state of Ohio. And then families within those schools then get a a a certain amount of money that they can take then to other schools. So there's a bill currently being discussed that would allow all kids in the state of Ohio or all families in the state of Ohio to have a voucher to go wherever they want. And the the overwhelming majority of the six hundred eleven public schools fiercely disagree with this. Because what what happens essentially is that money is taken out of your local levies, taken out of your funding at a public school district from the state funding. Provided to families that often go to to private and charter schools, pay tuition with that money. And those schools that they go to have no accountability at all, where public schools have all the accountability in the world and is put on a public stage every day. So the biggest argument, I guess, from public schools is if you're going to have vouchers, A, we don't like money being taken from our local coffers that we have to raise through levies, which is exactly what's happening. But B, make the playing feel even. So if you're going to go to one school versus another school, then let's have the accountability measures equal out. And that just isn't happening. It's very political. It's very much a frustrating thing for those of us that leave public school districts when we work so hard on behalf of our kids and then just have the money voted away. And take it right out of our community to wherever someone wants to go with no accountability how that particular school does. And and we have research that shows that the kids have vouchers that go to private schools and and many community schools perform much lower than than the kids in our schools. So it's maybe more than you wanted, but I appreciate the question.
The gist of this, we're not against choice, we're against not having, it's not an apple.
It's not an apples to apples, and that's that's exactly why I wanted to bring that piece up. I mean, i- i- in today's world, families have choices to go anywhere they want. I mean, you you're absolutely right, choice, and that's up to us to compete and and do our best as a school district, which I feel very confident in. But but when you can go somewhere and a district can decide whether they want you or not, we take all in our school system. From the most disabled young man or young woman to the brightest in the world and everything in between. And and we serve them and spend a lot and serve a lot and care a lot. That doesn't happen in in many other schools because that choice is really truly limited to a certain, certain type of of kid at some school. So so one come off, we're proud of what we do and and we're going to continue to fight for it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Mangich.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulrath.
Yes.
Item B, disposal of equipment and materials. We need a motion to dispose of the following cardinal stretch as a TV in Clay High School. That's eighteen sets of girls' soccer home and away jerseys. May I have a motion to dispose of them, please?
Sold.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a quick question also, Jane, how do we have a equipment with cardinal stretch?
I know you said that.
Oh, that's no, that's four oh one auxiliary funds. We're the fiscal agent and so that's why.
Okay, like I said, it's more, you know, for the communication public of, you know, other tax, you know, the respite and stuff for stretch.
Oh, no, it's, oh, certainly every year we get, Stretch gets state funds for local schools with grants. Actually, before this other stuff came along, Ohio provided more funds to local schools than any state in the nation. But the money comes to Oregon City Schools. I'm the fiscal agent and then Stretch has to follow our purchasing processes in order to purchase items. They get their, you know, approvals, et cetera. So that's why it's showing up in our.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I hope that makes sense.
That does, thank you.
And and just another editorial, if it's okay.
Sorry about that, yeah.
You know, I like to say that there are no more private schools in the state of Ohio. Because all private schools accept public funds without conditions and without the rules. Just how it is, didn't make the rules, it's just how it is.
Figure further discussion? Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Mangich.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Zavisky.
Yeah.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulrath.
Yes.
Item E, transportation contract. We need a motion to enter into transportation contract with the following. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the Cordell family from Rambo, St. Francis T. Sales High School. This is according to Ohio law. May I have a motion, please?
Sold.
Second.
Discussion.
Carol, I know you've mentioned the deadline, also deadline for this.
This should be the last twenty.
Yes, oh, gosh, what is that? What did we say that was?
Twenty days after thirty days.
Thirty.
After they enroll.
Yeah.
At something like that.
But but then we had a final date, which was past, it's past. Gosh, Dean, do you remember? I'll get that to you. But we but we did, we 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 are allowed from policy to set a date and a certain timeframe. So so these transportation contracts don't continue throughout the year. They have to meet a certain criteria, which is in our board policy. I apologize, I don't go there on top.
Thank you.
Donation.
Oh, did you give roll call for transportation? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mrs. Mangich. Or Mr. Mangich.
I have to check with my wife.
Okay, oh, good enough. Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulrath.
Yes.
Second, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donation. The photograph fees include approximately the value of a thousand dollars for coaches and players during the twenty twenty, during this twenty-two footballs.
That's not right.
Close enough.
Twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
This current year.
May I have a motion, please, to accept this donation?
Sold.
Second.
Fine.
Discussion.
Just want to thank Hall and I address, this early in the year, people gonna, we're gonna have food up there and he piled up on that. He's like, it's great thing to them, they got the sign up there, I think they get some good additional business and publicity. Community relation.
They've been wonderful ever since we, the first year we got the trust box. Supporting us. So, yeah, thank you, Ralphies, very much, and the owners, managers.
Roll call.
Mr. Mangich.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yeah.
Mr. Savick.
Yes.
Mrs. Mulrath.
Yes.
Item T, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed in the September twenty-first agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with court policy.
We we quit? We want to do this and then invite super attention. Okay?
Sure.
Come back. To be, are we good?
I'm good.
Okay, sorry, I got a little side trip there in my head. Okay. I have my super attendance report up here. So just to, just to, it's not in my report, but to piggyback off and thank you for the building. It's been a long time coming and, you know, now knowing where we stand with the with the support and the vote, I can't thank you guys enough. This, a lot of this idea started in a parking lot discussion with Tom Snead a few years back, when we were just talking about what could be and what some of the limitations we had for our programs in the arts that kids were going through Clay High School. But not necessarily having some of the skills or having some of the, I guess, the, some of the training they they needed maybe to to be a success, successful at the next level as they could. And we have a lot of kids, or have had a lot of kids anyways, that want to go on to college and do some really cool things in the arts, you know, whether it's theater or whether it's any of those other things. So so Tom Snead's our our vocal instructor and our theater arts director and and just a wonderful man. And and he he was very supportive and very helpful, I think, throughout this whole process. And I'm just gonna, if you don't mind, Tom, just say a couple things about what this building may do to help you and help kids in the program and and what you might do to do to even take us further than than where we are right now.
Sure, thank you. Well, thank you, board, for your vote of confidence in the vision. A tool like this is is going to help us as a as a comprehensive school in which we have career tech as part of our programming here. We have our musical theater program that's in career tech. And there is a pathway that the state has provided for performing arts to pursue, pursue career training. And when we when we started to pursue this a couple of years ago, one of the things that was very apparent is we needed some more tools to help us do and and succeed in that mission of preparing students in the performing arts world. Particularly if they want to pursue some type of career post-high school training. And then when you look around our community and you see some of the other schools and the facilities that they have, the programming that they offer, it's pretty apparent that if we are very much wanting to to maintain and attract students and keep them here in our community. You know, every time we have a kid go off to another school, especially in the performing arts, it just tears me apart because we're losing that talent. And we're losing that ability to impact them and to shape their lives. That's what the arts does and and probably a big, big way, it shapes people's lives. And I experienced that myself as a student growing up. And so the tool that you guys have just voted on to to move forward with is going to help us a number of ways. First of all, many of our career tech programs already partner with the universities in the area and other organizations, other companies. And part of that is to provide opportunities for college credit plus credits that they can earn by pursuing some of our programming here. In conjunction and in partnership with some of these universities in our area like Owens and so forth. Well, with the studio that we have as part of this pack package, the recording studio particularly, someday that can get us to a point where we can offer some commercial music-type trains, recording technology training. That would very much apply toward a student wanting to pursue that post-high school. We could partner with an Owens, we could partner with a Tiffin University, something like that, that have those programs in place. But in order for us to be a peer to them, we have to be able to give our students the experiences and kind of a baseline foundational instructional component to help them pursue that and be successful. That's one aspect of it. Not to mention a recording studio is really cool.
I'm excited.
And I can just imagine, I can think of right now a handful of kids in our program who will just eat that up when that when that equipment is out there. And they know that they can go up there and be creative. And again, for every student in our schools, every one of them has a niche. And all my students I work with, their niche is in the performing arts. And that is where they suc- that is where they exceed, that's where they success, they they experience success. And they excel in such in such a way that they really find this is where I belong. And so a tool like that is going to help kids experience that. It's going to help them shape their lives in more ways than just the actual skill they're learning, but in many other ways. In terms of being disciplined and perseverance and creative and critical thinkers. So all these things are going to come along with what we can offer out there. That's one aspect. The other aspect is the dance instruction. And from a musical theater standpoint, I can tell you, students who go on and want to audition at the college level, dance skill is always their weakness, always. Just a couple of years ago, we had students who were very, very, very eager to pursue musical theater and audition, but couldn't get in because of their dance skills. And so if we can provide them that training with, we give them good vocal instruction now, we give them good acting instruction, but the dance component is is really what's missing in terms of preparing students for any type of performing arts and musical theater career. So this tool is going to help us do that, and that's a big, big thing. Right now, when we teach our kids dance for a line limiter show, we have to do it on the stage. It's it's not the best spot, right? But a studio experience where they have a space to work with their instructor, it's a little bit more confined, it's much more conducive in terms of the actual surface that they're dancing on. That's going to be an amazing addition to us. And then thirdly, as an overall tool that our community can benefit from, performances. Excuse me, performances that we can offer to the community to show our folks, this is what you're investing in, this is what you are developing. In terms of performance characteristics that the kids are developing, the skills they're developing. We all love to go to the football games and cheer on our team, right? Well, I love it when people come to see the shows and cheer on our kids on the performing arts aspects. And when we can give those students an opportunity to shine, just like we do in many other areas, whether it be in academics or in sports, performing arts is equally important. And what you have done tonight is a great vote of confidence in what we can do as a school and what we can offer our students and offer to the community. So thank you so much, I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. If I wasn't, I'm a little sick still, but if I if I wasn't, chances are, I start crying up here. When I start talking about what our kids experience, I, it touches my heart in a deep way. And what you have done made a big part of what their future success is going to look like. So thank you, everybody, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Mrs. Snead. Well said.
And Mrs. Snead, our first play is November twelfth, thirteen, fourteen.
Yes, it's a musical review. It's a view review, so it's a collection of songs and we encourage you to come. It's going to be awesome. We're having several alumni, excuse me, several alumnus coming back. We're having several alumni, several alumnus coming back on the thirteenth to join on that night's performance. So it's gonna be a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hal, I don't think we touched on the timeline, like when, you know, construction will start and when you anticipate then.
Yep, sure. Might maybe give a quick timeline?
Yeah, that was, we're anticipating we'd be done by next school, to start next school.
They won't be able to use it for the next school yet?
Correct, yeah, so we'll start construction relatively soon. I mean, acquiring material, but then construction will go through the summer and be ready for opening.
Okay. Will we see trucks and stuff around there as early as November, December? Or is it going to be a little bit further?
I gotta get materials.
Yep, no, I hear you, because the original plan was get started, you know, and have a kind of a winter project, but materials.
The winter project, the interior renovation part, we're definitely getting it started. Sure. Exterior basically worked, then it'll probably be spring.
Yep.
When you talk about the equipment and the things, will that interfere with any of that flow in that parking lot?
No, I watch it every day and others, maybe and others may drive it during the day. I mean, we are going to lose the one pathway that parents drive right in front of it where that grassy area will, but they'll just go down the middle. It's really, I don't see it really interrupting. You know, it may take a day or two or three to readjust the patterns, but really, other than that very first year when we switched our pickup patterns, it's been years now, it's been smooth for the most part. So I think we'll be just fine. So, all right, thank you for that, everyone. So I'm just gonna kind of run through mine, just again, COVID update. You know, obviously, we're, some good news is the Lucas County numbers are still dropping, but they're not dropping rapidly. You know, they are steadily, the last five weeks, four weeks, five weeks started to decline per the one hundred thousand mark that I'm looking at. We're at four hundred and thirty-nine for one hundred thousand, we were at a peak of five seventy-four. Obviously, we want, we want that number to get to a hundred or below. That's where most professionals, the health departments, others say is their comfort level, is that one hundred or below number. So obviously, we're hoping that it gets to that sooner than later. We, our COVID numbers have kind of flattened out in the past five weeks. We've averaged about eight positive students per week. It's all posted on our public website, so you can go look at and see exactly how many we've had each week. I think we had ten last week, maybe six, a couple, three weeks ago, and then eight, you know, but on average in the last five weeks, about eight. Staff numbers have been, have been really low, onesies, twosies of individuals that have, have been positive, so we're very fortunate by that. We are anticipating the approval of the vaccine for the five to eleven-year-olds. And just today, I was, it was reached, the health department reached out to myself and other superintendents and asking if we're willing to hold a local clinic, which we are. I think for that new group not having that opportunity, we wanted to do what we can to make it easy for our families. So I don't know what that will look like or where that will be or if it will be, but I certainly emailed that we're more than happy to do what we can to help that group. So, any questions on COVID? You know, the mask, you know, discussion continues to be a legitimate discussion. I know people are frustrated, I mean, almost to a person, most of us will say, yeah, we don't want to have to wear masks, right? Almost to a person. That's, that's how people feel, there's no doubt about it. But the quarantine rules and those, those things that keep us in school continue to be in place. They continue to be the driving force of why all Lucas County schools continue to have masks. So we're hoping, we don't know what that pivot point is for us. Is it the five, you know, through eleven-year-old vaccination? Is it, is it the cases per one hundred thousand, is that the tipping point? Is it a change in state or federal CDC recommendations? You know, a lot of things could tip that scale one way or another, but, but I'll reiterate what we said last meeting is that our kids are handling this very well. They're not loving it, but school continues to move forward and we're a quarter for the way into the school year and I'm very, very proud of what our kids are doing and how they're reacting. I mean, it is, it is, it is a good situation. So any questions on COVID?
Real quick question on your comment about the canceling, not canceling.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I know we've had some JV football, like JV hasn't had much of the season, not some other teams have canceled, injury.
I think that's injury related. I'm not aware of any COVID. I mean, like other teams have, maybe, yeah, we've missed some games because of other teams, but not because of ours. But in that freshman JV, it's a numbers game. Our numbers were at the JV levels always if we have injuries, if the varsity people move up and it just becomes a, but I don't know the specifics on that, but, but I've not been contacted by any coach anywhere and been made aware that we had to make a decision against some, if we did, I'm not aware of it. Certainly not at the varsity, varsity level, which has been great because that was the worry going into the season, right? Like the last, last year's, are we even going to have the ability to do what we did? And we did. So our plan's working, we were able to keep people, our kids playing and doing the things they want to do. Shout out to a few people for, we had a health and safety meeting. I want to thank members of the Oregon Fire and Oregon Police Departments, the Jerusalem Township Fire Department, Lucas County Sheriffs, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Police Division, Amy Drescher, our mental health support, school leaders and board members, all came together for our bi-annual district-wide health and safety meeting a couple of weeks ago. This meeting serves to bring together agencies and school leaders to update everyone on what is happening around the district and continue to build relationships among those agencies who will be responding in the event of a crisis. We are, we are, and I believe we are so fortunate to have tenured and capable agency leaders in our community. I talk to other superintendents, we talk all the time. This is not the case in several of our communities around us, that they have such strong relationships with the police and fire and the townships, where you can on a, on a cell phone, text or call and have somebody come to a meeting or bounce an idea or certainly collectively come to a large group meeting like we had. We are very, very fortunate to have that and I want to publicly thank them for, you know, their support and their continued willingness to be involved. And thank you to those of you that were able to make it. Safety continues to be a priority here in the district. Third thing there, we are bringing back our STEM clubs after a short hiatus, if you will. If you're not aware of these, we started these several years ago, which it was funded by a grant from BP, the Refinery. So we hope that continues in the future, not sure, but, but we're hoping that continues. And what that does is it funds STEM clubs, which are after-school clubs for kids to come together and learn about robotics essentially in Lego clubs. So we have a fourth grade program to the elementaries. We have a combined fifth through eighth grade group that meets and will compete in a Lego, local Lego competition. You guys have seen those before, those of you that are on the board, they've come, come here and spoke. And then we just started this week, last week, this week, recently, in the high school, which has come together basically because kids came up to me at the last board meeting and said, hey, can we get this going again? And I was excited that the kids want to get this going again. And we have about nine high school kids that are building robots and they'll go, if everything goes to plan, they'll, they'll go to a competition somewhere in the state of Ohio, we don't know where it's at, or I don't know where it's at, and pick their robot, we go through reports and compete. And so again, it's one of those unique things that a lot of kids don't take advantage of, but I don't care. If it's nine kids that want to take advantage of it and we're able to support it, then we're doing it. So that's run it. So I wanted to thank those advisors for their time. And last thing, I just want to, I want to bring this to everybody's attention because it's a big issue here at Clay, it's a big issue at Facet, it's an issue at Eisenhower and it is certainly an issue in public schools and private schools alike, vaping. And I guess this is my public service announcement to the community who's watching, to those that are here to reach out and ask you, please, talk to your sons and daughters who are in school about the vaping that goes on. Vaping, I saw an article that says vaping has decreased in the last couple of years. Yeah, that's because school hasn't been in the last year and a half, right? Where do the statistics come from? The statistics come from schools reporting statistics. There's no other entity anywhere that reports on what kids are doing except schools and we're happy to do so. But I'm telling you, the, it appears and feels that it's worse than it's ever been and we're chasing it every single day. We worry about these kids' addiction to vaping. I think there is still the mentality that somehow vaping is not smoking and vaping is not cigarettes, so therefore it's okay. And as time goes by, more and more studies are coming out about the harmful effects of vaping and some of them even worse than smoking. It is hurting our kids and so what my plea is to, to the public and to anyone is talk to your kids. You know, people have this mentality that sometimes, oh, it's those other kids that are doing the vaping or it's that group of kids that are the ones doing it or it's only the boys or it's only the girls. Let me tell you, it's your kids. It is your kids, your good kids, your bad kids, your whatever kids. It's kids that get sucked into a situation that maybe they don't even want to be in. So it's not everyone, I'm certainly not accusing of every student of doing it, but you need to be aware that they're experiencing something and being influenced by the vape, whether it's going into a bathroom, not vaping themselves, but encountering the situation and not knowing what to do and feeling bad about it and then they don't know what to do. So please talk with your kids about what's going on and encourage them to certainly not vape. It is not healthy because you don't know what's in the vape. There's a black market vaping community out there that these kids get this stuff from. It's, they don't even know what's in it, all right? It's, it's really bad. So sorry about, again, I got my, my lecture there again, but it's, it's a problem we can't win alone in schools. We're trying, we're, we're patrolling, we're doing everything we can with the support and leadership that we have, but without families helping take ownership, we can't win this battle and right now it's, it's winning. The vapes are winning and we don't want that to be. But with that, and not to end on a, on a bad note, if you will, but it's an important note that we need to do and thank you for the time, Mrs. Mulmar. If there's any questions, that's my report.
Anything? Anyone? Okay, any other business? Or committee reports, finance?
Basically, finance committee, Jane is still working on private forecast because of state results. Our main focus this last time was taking care of this new arts building that we're building, so we've been working on that in our last meeting. And other than that, that's all we've been really working on.
Thank you. Captain Rudney, policy safety.
No report.
Thank you, policy personnel. We still haven't had policy, we're going to get in on data one of those days, I'm sure. Academic?
Academic's committee met last week and we, as you know, the state reports came out last week. Due to COVID, we did see a decline in overall achievement. This was not a surprise, it was fully expected. It also mirrors what's going on at the state level, the regional level and the national level as well. The good thing for Oregon City Schools is the progress, progress measures and graduation rates continue to be our bright spots. Progress looks at the academic growth of students over a year's worth of time in the area of English, language arts. Our students made more than expected growth while students in grades five and six made expected growth in math and given the fact that much of what was done last year was online, I think that says an awful lot. The four-year average for graduation rate was ninety-two point three percent and the five-year average was ninety-six point nine. This is almost identical to the graduation rate on the eighteen, nineteen report card. Our career and tech report card remains strong with minimal impact due to COVID. The career and post readiness percentage actually increased in twenty-twenty-one and the post-program placement percentage remained over ninety-five percent. Very close.
Thank you. Let's just leave it, student. Let's just leave the liaison.
We've basically covered the backpack and that was our recommendation for legislation. Thank you very much, Board.
Student achievement liaison? Nothing? Okay, board discussion, anything for the good of the board? Okay, we will have an executive session and it will be on the number, the number one appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of an employee or official or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, licensee or student unless the employee, official licensee or student requests a public hearing. But that's what it will be about. We will dismiss from executive session. There could be no decisions made. The next board meeting I have is November fifteenth, sixteenth. That's my next. At six o'clock. Anything else for the good of the board? May I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
So.
Second?
Second, second.
Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
No.
Okay. Mr. Magnitch?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulmar?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.